So for those that probably haven't been attending the Security Project calls, this time or this time slot today was put aside for us to talk. We usually meet weekly and talk about security topics. And in our last call, we had said at Open Compute, we take the opportunity to have a face-to-face and meet everybody and then address some of the open items that we wanted to go and tackle in Open Compute. So I don't know everybody here, but I know a lot of you guys. So my name is Brian Kelly, and you've probably heard me on the calls, talk a little bit. I'm one of the project leads in the Security Project. So I don't know if we want to do an intro or if we want to just roll onto our topics, but an intro will be probably good so we get to know each other.
Hey, I'm Nate. I'm the other co-project lead. I'm a harbor engineer at Google.
Yuval Yitkin from Linux.
Chris Engel, IBM.
Elaine Palmer from IBM. I work on Secure Boot and stuff like that.
Wojtek Pawirtowski from Intel. Work on the platform for resilience and the device attestation as well.
Adrian Pearson from Intel. I work on SSD security.
I'm Shyam from Lard Semiconductor. I'm in Secure Boot section, working with various people implementing PFRs.
Abhishek Jain from Microchip Technology. I work as an applications engineer with Microchip.
Kyle Gady with Microchip. Work with Abhishek.
Rich from Novoton. Work on BMC and TPMs in our group.
Jill Foster from Microsemi. I work on server storage products.
Chen Yi from Microsemi, Device Architect.
Zach Barbara from AMI.
Andrej Milkumian, Linux Solutions Engineers.
Chesh Wang from Cigay.
Lionel Xin from Huawei.
Sahil Rehan, Facebook.
Brian Vanikovina, Security Product Line Manager at Intel.
Devin DeGoudt from Microsoft.
Mahdili Bayrajyu from Big Switch Networks.
Luk Chen from Aspeed.
Dwaraka Perthani from Aspeed.
All right. Thanks a lot, everybody. Oh, yeah. How we dial in and get this online? Do you just maybe down here, the technical guy? So there's some people who wanted to dial in on the phone. Welcome. Hey. Good. How are you? Okay. So you want to introduce yourself? We just did a round of intros, and I know you're on the security floor.
Sure. Hi, my name is Harb. I'm from Qualcomm. I'm software architect.
Thank you. So the topic I think we had today that we wanted to discuss was we wanted to scope attestation. It was a topic that I came to learn, had a little bit of ambiguity around it. There's a lot of ways to do it, and we wanted to discuss that right now. What's in scope? What's out of scope? Go through that, and then how we can get to a point where we have both component and platform level attestation. So Elaine, you had a draft, and folks had a little bit of homework to go and review that and provide comments. Or is this the first time everybody's going to see it?
I don't have any comments out here.
All right. All right. Okay. We want to go through that now, then?
I have a larger question.
Sure.
So in other OCP projects, people have submitted whatever submissions, our codes, specs, and so forth. Are we starting with something or are we making something out of folklore?
I think we're starting something really, in my mind. We, you know, we're going to give a talk a little bit later on about the state of the industry as it is today. It's not pretty. And we have a security solution that we go to a lot of expense and costs to go and implement and enforce to get the level of security that we want from OCP hardware. Now, I don't think in the future that should be the way security is implemented, that you take a component that doesn't have security and you forcefully add security to it. I don't think that gives us the right agility and the right speed as we move forward. So, and I know Google has a similar technology because they face exactly the same problems as we do with platform-level security. So what we want to get to is a point, and we want to take feedback. You know, we've both came out with a very similar design, might, you know, might not be the best way to do security, might be an interim way to do security. It's really up to the forum to decide. And we want to develop security essentially in the open and in the spirit of Open Compute, just like we did with Project Olympus. We took a system that wasn't yet designed, and we put specifications out there. And as feedback came in, that design evolved. And that's partly why it's so successful today is because features got added that we wouldn't have necessarily included in that technology. But we included them because there was an overwhelming interest from the community to have these features. So that's product adoption. In terms of security, we want to do the same thing. Everybody has, I don't know, security or else they've got a proprietary security team that's not quite, doesn't quite fit. So how do we get together, design it so it fits? I can pick it. I can go and, we can, you know, Nate can go and pick it. I can go and pick a security technology and say, this is how it has to be to fit into our platforms. That's not the right solution, though. We don't believe that's the right solution.
It's also really useless if Brian picks one thing and I pick something else.
Yes. It's very complicated, right?
Trying to design for both of us is going to be a nightmare for everyone.
Yes.
So are we starting with Cerberus or have those been contributed?
So Cerberus security has been contributed, but it's still in a, it's contributed in a very immature state in that it can't evolve to adapt to their security. So, for example, the stuff that we decide out of this, what's going to happen with it? So if you have some silicon right now today that doesn't have security in it, it's probably going to take more than a week to get it into it. So I think that we can adopt Cerberus relatively quickly and incorporate those features and have it there before that security appears in the next rev of that silicon. So I hope that, from my perspective, answers the question. I don't know.
And you have a new project?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. New project. The model is, I guess, a little bit different. We're really pushing to collectively get feedback on it because it impacts everybody. I think maybe what's a little bit separate from when I look at some of the other projects is it's like, hey, I've got this motherboard. Here you go, here's Gerber schematics. Go at it. Or you say, hey, I've got this partially baked motherboard. Help me finish it. I think with security, it's going to span a lot of areas and components. So it's kind of got, I feel it's got a broader scope. And we have to, as a group, define what that scope should be and then how we address it short term and long term.
Eric, we can pass the microphone?
No, I'm the last person.
There we go. We're recording this, so.
So, yeah.
So I think, I mean, kind of related to Elaine's point, and I don't know if this is the right form to discuss this, but it seems like, I spoke to somebody in the hallway, and they're already building Cerberus-certified hardware. And so while we're talking about coming up with a spec, there's already a spec out there that I don't know what it will mean to be Cerberus compliant. And then, once this spec comes out, you know, whether those people are going to implement two versions or going to, you know, transition to this. So again, I don't know if this is the right form for this, but it seems to me a little bit disconcerting that Microsoft is pushing this standard on one side and getting people to certify to it while at the same time trying to come up with a standard here.
So, you know, to think that security is not going to evolve, so there's Cerberus today, there was Cerberus six months ago, there was Cerberus a year ago. So we decided to open up Cerberus as the Microsoft's way of addressing the absence of security in the industry. So people that are spinning ASICs now, they want to know what to do. We don't yet have the answer for them. But in two years' time, if they implement the same security that they implemented two years ago, it's probably not going to be sufficient. Security is going to evolve. Attacks are going to evolve. So we have to continue to evolve it. So the specs in that way, when we get industry leaders together to say, hey, is this the right way to go do it? And if it's not, we need to discuss that, right? So people are implementing security today. They want to know how to go do it. There's many ways to go and add security to components. So, yeah, Cerberus is one way.
So the document that we all are reviewing on the Google Docs that you have, is that going to evolve into a project specification or it's just going to define that what's in scope and our scope, and then we have a next step where we actually define how the project specification looks like, what algorithms, and things like that?
I think both. So right now, you know, we've only really started to meet. We've had a few meetings, and we've started to define, hey, what is in scope? And then, at least in my mind, the next steps are to go and put out specifications or, if you want to call it, yeah, specs on how Open Compute hardware should implement security. Okay.
Kind of back to Elaine's question a little bit, from, at least for, you already started the Secure Boots part for our test station. I don't know how far she's gotten, but getting a jumpstart and getting us started. Is there actually a problem with starting with Cerberus as the base, you know, for our test station? Does that offend Google? Does it offend other people? Does it, you know, how do we jumpstart quickly?
Um, yeah, you know, I would like things to move faster than are moving right now in a form, just personally. I don't know if the thing that's in Cerberus right now is the right thing. In my opinion, I think it's the right thing because I knew it, right? But is that going to work for everybody? Is it going to work for Google? I don't really know, so.
Should we ask that question?
I mean, we, yeah, we'll work on it, and we haven't, I mean, we don't know the deep inner workings of Cerberus yet either. So I don't know if it'll work for Google yet until we, you know, open up more of the design.
And I can say the attestation that is in the specifications that are published today has already evolved a little bit on Cerberus. Just natural evolution internally. But if there's feedback on that, yeah, we want to take that. One thing I do know is that, and it's important to us, is really been able to attest over different interfaces in a similar way. You know, the classic, over the coming years, if I was to predict what's going to happen, the classic server architecture is going to start to evolve rapidly in that the core host processors are no longer the first thing to boot inside of the platform. And in fact, in some cases, they may actually be slaves to other peripherals. So I think, given that and how we, you know, some of the attestation technologies that are out there today, I think that that has to change. So I'd like to see it be possible over any interface.
Another thing is that I don't want to fall into a trap of saying like, well, this is what we currently have today, and therefore, like, we should keep that going in the future. I think it's better if we are going to start a design from scratch, that we try to design the best thing and not limit ourselves to what already exists as a starting point.
And going back to your question, I think about, you know, whether we should just start with Cerberus and use it right now and whether it's going to make some people or companies angrier or not less anger. I think from Intel's point of view, we don't, I think we will be kind of hesitant on putting third-party chips on our devices. And, yeah, we, yeah, we're, no, that's why, like, we also, like, came up with that idea to do, to just enhance PCIe, right? And I think historically, we haven't been the best to do things in the open, and hopefully that's going to change because I think that's going to go the path forward, right? To essentially do it in the open and with community instead of working the dungeon for a year and then at the end, like, just come up, oh, hey, we did this, right? So same thing, like, for example, like with PFR, I'm a member of the team that does the Intel PFR, and to be honest, I would just love to put it all on GitHub. I don't think it's going to, yeah, it's going to be a lot of work internally to do that, but, yeah, but I think open should be the way to go for security and be able to leverage the community essentially, right?
Also, one of the gaps that we have right now is that Cerberus defines Secure Boot for a given entity. Now, here comes the question, define entity. If you talk about, let's say, Intel CPU, it has its own embedded firmware and embedded RISC on top of the CPU, which we all relate to as the only one. There are many other devices which run multiple cores running multiple layers of software with independence or some dependency between them. All of that is currently not really covered at all in Cerberus because it reads authenticate. There's an entity which communicates with the platform boot of task. But what happens if that device includes multiple entities inside? We need to think about that. We need to really clear the definition of what we would like to authenticate when we pass on ownership of attestation, let's say, from wrong code to something else and so on. Right now, I see some kind of vagueness in the definition in that perspective, and definitely, this is something which is basic, you know, really to have a working definition here because otherwise, it's going to be theoretical because people will have different types of devices. Some sections of those devices will support Cerberus, others will ignore it, and we have no security in that case.
Never design a device like that, is the response. So, yeah, we want to get to having security, but all mutable code should be secured. So if these devices are loading code from somewhere else and it's kind of hokey, then it's not a secure device, right? So, no, I don't, Intel processors don't do that. They load the source code from a load store, and we have protection on that load store, and they have technologies too to help protect it. So I don't want to name them in your thing, so I just wanted to clarify that. You had a question as well, I think. Yeah, sorry.
I could do this really quick, and maybe it can be a segue to sort of kicking off the actual discussion about attestation. So, you know, the question of whether to use Cerberus or not, and I think this kind of goes back to Titan as well, there's really two parts to this. One is Cerberus and Titan as hardware sort of, you know, chips that provide some, you know, for kind of generalizing some kind of PCR-type capability and firmware, you know, signature-checking capability grossly generalizing. And then there's sort of the entire platform-level attestation. And I think, you know, the Cerberus spec talks, is pretty clear about the device itself, the chip, but not so much about the details of the platform like you were alluding to. And so when it comes to, you know, should we take Cerberus as a spec and use it, I think there are a lot of questions that I would have around that. You know, having a firmware manifest inside a chip that needs to be updated, that introduces operational complexity, having a power-on sequencing and PCIe power-on standby modes that not only sort of increases complexity, it means that every vendor needs to be compliant with their timing. From talking to our hardware guys, that seems like, yeah, it's a hit or miss. We're probably going to see a lot of problems in the data center with this. They're like, yeah, we'll do this in version three, let everybody else figure it out. You know, there's the question of what happens? Do you attest at a sort of, at power-on? Do you attest all your peripherals, including things behind PCIe devices, HBAs, hard drives, et cetera, and then let the system boot? Or do you say that, you know, like, let's say, my NIC and my BMC are the critical components? I attest those, and then I'll let the rest of the system boot and attest it afterwards? There's all these questions which are kind of, you know, sort of, and I think that that's kind of, in my mind, the meat of the problem. Like, everybody understands basically how to do, you know, hardware, like firmware verification, PCRs, signatures, all of those kind of things. It's more of the platform-level stuff. Where do we want to go? Is it synchronous? Is it asynchronous? Which is a better design? And I know, I know that, I brought this up before, and the answer's been like, yeah, we should, like, provide everybody with options. But I think that, you know, we have a lot of people with a lot of sort of operational experience, and it would be good to sort of say, yeah, these are options, but we think that your life's going to be a lot better if you don't use UEFI Secure Boot, for instance. Right? Yeah, I'm just going to take potshots at all the technologies out there today, so. Anyway, so, you know, in terms of attestation, I think that, I don't know how other people feel, I think that might be a good place to start, is how do you sort of see the overall system working?
Yeah, I guess so. My opinion on part of that is, like, power gating devices and things like that seems like it's really easy to end up with a brick in the data center, which is super not helpful because you can't diagnose it remotely, you can't have any automated systems, try to figure out what's wrong if you just have a machine that sits there powered off. So I would be against that approach. But I do think that if you're trying to attest to your system, if you wait until, like, part of the system is attested and part of it just boots, and you try to figure it out later, you have this kind of weird time in the middle where, well, part of your system is correct, part of your system, who knows? And it's also a lot harder to gate a lot of interfaces after boot. For example, like a spy boot interface, can you be, in Intel world, can you be guaranteed that PCH isn't going to try to, like, issue read or write commands to your BIOS flash after your CPUs have booted? Maybe, maybe not. It's way easier to do that while you're holding everything and reset because then you can have, like, for example, you can boot just a BMC. So first, you, you know, attest to the flash that the BMC is loading from, and then you let the BMC load. And then maybe the BMC can go around and check all of your peripherals and all your things that are plugged in over some low-speed interface. Obviously, like, PCIe is not up yet because you haven't run any BIOS code. So maybe you have iSCSI or, you know, some other easy interface for that to use.
Yeah, that's going to go down well when I tell people that you need to have. So one of the concerns is like, does this mean we're trying to get rid of iSCSI? Does this mean we're going to run iSCSI to every single device on the system? That's, you know, not a, let's just say, it's unpopular. The other thing sort of that I wanted to say was that it's, when you say attest, it can mean different things, right? There's the remote attestation, and then there's sort of Secure Boot, right? So you can say that the device does a Secure Boot, so it's in a trusted state, but I still want to come back later and remotely attest it. And so it depends on which one you're talking about.
Kind of, so in this case, I'm talking about locally attesting. So you have, you know, basically something on your system that is like the central security element. I keep going back to the BMC because that's sort of a thing that's up and running early, generally, but it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, you're preaching to the choir. All about root of trust is BMC, but.
Yeah, so I'm thinking, look, that, having, in this case, your BMC be able to attest that, like, all your peripherals you plugged in are, like, are running signed code and booted correctly, and being able to, like, collect all that information in one place, and then how you communicate that, like, further up your software stack or, like, to some, you know, data center nodes, they're going to make sure that every booted machine is properly attested is now like a higher-level software issue.
Right. So you're not really talking about saying that, when you say attest, the BMC attest these devices, really what you're saying is that they, what do they report, like, their signatures, their hash values? It's not that the BMC actually has, like, a whitelist locally stored and it says, this doesn't match the firmware I expect, I'm going to shut this device down?
Well, that's part of what we have to design here, is how that works.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, I think that, at least, I would like to dig into the details of how that system bring-up orchestration is going to work.
Correctly. That's my vote.
Like you mentioned, but I know some of our systems, the hypervisor is one that actually brings in I/O expansion drawers and stuff. So there's no way the BMC would even be able to talk to them until the host is booted to a certain point, and then they get powered on and available, and then you can go figure it out. Plus, you have runtime, bringing adapters down, bringing them up, firmware updates at runtime, all that kind of stuff.
If your BMC doesn't have, like, an embedded NIC on it and it has a standalone shared NIC, it kind of complicates the whole process because now, if you can't bring that NIC up, you can't bring your BMC up either, or at least talk to it.
So you don't necessarily need to fail. Like, like I said, you don't want to make a brick in the data center if you don't attest correctly. For exactly what you just said, like, if your NIC doesn't, can't be attested, you don't want to just shut off your NIC because then your server disappears and there's no way to diagnose it. So I think it's better to keep running, but in an untrusted state, and be able to limit what your system has access to. Either locally, like, maybe you, you know, block flash and block hard drive access and block all kinds of things locally, and also, you know, report up the networking stack through sideband channels that, you know, maybe you have NCSI from the BMC or you have a separate, you know, management network or some way that you can report up, hey, this machine doesn't attest properly. So I don't think you should ever just brick a machine if it doesn't attest.
One thing, as I listen to the conversation, I think useful as we start moving forward is actually create a stacking, actually a layered approach to attestation because each of us have different interests, right? Meaning, I'm a little device at the end, so I'm really curious what my role is, right? And then you go up the platform hierarchy, and there's going to be different roles and different interests. And then also, it'd be interesting to start talking about, you know, we've kind of communicated mostly about things that are easily to attest, meaning generally, our PCI bus, that's the kind of, we're kind of defaultly focusing on. But I'm in the HBA business, so I've got a whole bunch of crap behind me that somehow needs to be attested, right? And we haven't talked about how that, you know, do protocols change to do this? There's a lot of overarching, so maybe, I came here thinking, oh, There's a lot of overarching, so maybe, I came here thinking, oh, we need to talk about details of what the devices are going to be doing, but in some ways you probably need to be talking about the overall model as to, you know, here, we're going to say this is the platform attestation layer and its responsibilities are this, right? And then this is the device, it's its responsibility. And then how about the subsystems behind the devices? And we never talked about that at all at this point.
But we can, we can start with startup sequence or we can start with different layers of attestation. I don't mind where we want to start the discussion.
Can we have just a short discussion on what each of us believe attestation means? And I'll even start it, right? Because to me, when I started this whole process, I first thought, oh, attestation means, oh, the system's secure or not secure, right, or trusted or not trusted. And I think that's the wrong definition. I think the more right definition is if attestation fails, it just indicates it's a possibility that the system is untrustworthy. It's a subtle difference, but if we don't make that distinction, I think we're going to get into long debates about how do you establish trust? And I don't want to go there.
Okay, okay. We'll have to go there eventually, but, okay.
Yeah, I think one thing might be useful there is to talk specifically about secure boot versus measured boot and remote attestation versus local attestation. But I think more general comment, like I admittedly just looked at the document about attestation while this was going on, but I think, you know, you guys have some idea of how this is going to work. And I think that instead of like laying out all the questions, you should just put up something on the whiteboard or like, and be like, this is what the picture's going to look like. And then we can be like, it doesn't work in this case, it doesn't work in that case, and, you know, hopefully quickly.
So you want me to come out with the solution and then you want to pick it apart?
Well, I think you guys already have something in mind. We've thought through it, you're like, the BMC should orchestrate it or Cerberus should orchestrate it. It should require power on sequencing, but it shouldn't require failure, you know, and how's it going to get reported? I'm sure all these things have been thought through. If they have it, then yeah, we can like brainstorm together.
Yeah, well, I think they have been thought through, I, you know, Google has obviously thought through it. Microsoft has thought through it. Maybe some folks haven't somewhere taught about how, you know, secure root is going to work or how attestation is going to eventually roll up. But that's what we're here for, is to have these discussions around how we think it's a good way to work. And maybe there's more than one. But I know for me, there's more than one, more than one way. Because we've so much varying hardware architecture and so on. So that's why it's important that our attestation is, is to kind of generalize it, can go over multiple interfaces to get that information.
Okay, but that's like saying you can do it over PCIe versus i squared C. Is that what you're getting at?
You should be able to do it over both. The low hanging fruit for us, of course, is I two C because in our designs, that's always available. We have designs where we don't have PCIe, right? We have, we have systems that PCIe devices come up before PCIe is up too. And then they bring up the root port. So there's very different hardware architectures that we've got to design around.
Okay.
Now, at the same time, if you're just I two C, maybe it's very easy to bypass. You put a rogue device into a PCIe slot, you put a secure device that can attest over I two C that it's feeling good and everything's good and then the host boot sees different stuff then you're out of band attestation. So we're very aware of that challenge.
So maybe we say like we start a straw man with like a regular server platform and then which, you know, brings up with sort of some CPLD or something and see if it works for that. And then you can throw in your special, like the PCI device brings up the root complex and we can see how it would work?
We can do that if that's going to be fruitful. But there's more than, you know, there's more than one chassis. There's chassis that don't have a PCIe at all, right?
Right.
How does it work in that environment?
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is that we need some straw man proposal to start hacking at.
So as far as a straw man, the plan was to do that. But before we did a straw man, we needed to scope out what do we put in it? So that was what this draft document is attempting to do, which is what's in scope and what's not in scope. And then the second step would be, okay, let's do a straw man.
I think there's a connector up here, you might have to stand up for a minute. Oh, it's all just like the H. An Apple thing? Oh, like the VGA?
All right, I wonder if the folks on the web conference can see this too? How will we know? I think while he's getting the logistics, we can do the easy part. Are you seeing my whole screen? Oh, wow, okay. See if I can make this bigger so that you, all right. So the first thing is, what are we doing this for? The assumption is that this is going into a bigger specification. This is just one piece of it, the attestation piece, and it will be incorporated into something bigger from our whole group. Audience, having to go through these questions made me really think, which is, who's going to consume this? Who cares? Obviously, system developers, system designers, component designers, and the entities that consume this attestation. So I view attestation as having at least three pieces. There's one which is outbound, which is to the outside world. This is what this system is running. One is within the system. It says, here's my little piece and I'll tell you what I'm running and you tell me. And then the third is kind of a hybrid of that, which is, in some of our systems at IBM, some of them do a self boot where they just boot themselves. And others have, I like to liken it to the little pushback tugs for airplanes. You know, we've got a system that helps the bigger mainframe to boot. So when we get into attestation there, we have to be concerned about what are those support systems running? What is the host running? And so that's kind of a hybrid. It's not just one single attestation out. Okay, so, and obviously cloud service providers. So is there any, did I, what did I leave out? Or what parties did I leave out here for the audience? And you all can always edit this document later, but. Yeah, no, I don't mind, let's see. Better? Yeah, I can even zoom some more. All right, so if you think of other people in the audience for our document, let me know. Please. All right, while he's working, then we'll keep going. All right, so the out of scope here. The, so security information and event management systems, obviously they care what's running on your system. They want to be monitoring it constantly or even at least just the boot time. But we don't, in this project, we're not trying to architect how they work. We're just trying to produce the data that they consume. Okay, so that's why those are out of scope. Key management itself is a whole can of worms. I mean, that's systems, we can have a whole project for that. So we'll have to sort of assume that keys appear magically somehow, but we're not going to go through the whole process of how are those keys managed? This one's controversial perhaps, tamper protection and response. Let's see. When we get into our solutions, then specific hardware designs, like is this going to be something that's part of a bigger module or is it a standalone chip? I don't think we really care. We just, it's there magically. Okay? Another controversial one is virtualized devices. So, you know, in our world, we start with physical TPMs and attestation at that level. But eventually on a massive server with, you know, thousands of virtual machines running, we obviously can't share the tiny little physical device. So, or we could, but it just doesn't make sense. So we switch into a virtual world for virtual TPMs and such. So I think that in our, since we have adapter and component participants here, I think going up into the virtual space is not in our scope. Maybe in the future, but. Yeah, well, I don't know, what would you do? Yeah, what, so on what platform is my VTPM running? Is my VM running? Which way would you go? I know, I tend to leave it out if it's not clear what to do.
I think if you have hardware passed through in a VM where you're passing through a NIC straight to the VM, the VM might want to know what firmware is running on it and be able to attest to it, even though you may not want to give it the ability to update that firmware. The other example, which I can no longer remember the right term for, is when one NIC can expose multiple virtual NICs to a VM. You might want to be able to attest to that. And I don't know if we have anybody representing cloud service providers, but I know that a lot of people are thinking about being able to remotely attest VMs when they deploy them on cloud platforms and also being able to attest SGX containers. So I think that there will be, at some point, people will want to do this. Whether we want to tackle it now or later is, you know, I'm always for ignoring other problems, but.
Maybe what we need to do is come up with a list for what's next. Like we start with this and then go on. Yeah.
So.
I was going to say, as a first pass, I think it's probably good if we stick to physical level. And we can sort of assume that you won't like start booting up virtual machines if the hardware doesn't attest correctly from the start. And later on, like you'll have the, you know, sort of cryptographic hashes or some bits of data around from your attestation. And so how you expose that to like virtual machines or things like that is a, it's a software problem. I don't know, I'm a hardware guy.
So I have a question with regards to the key management, which is out of the scope. Now, I get that it's a completely, you know, complicated subject. But do we want to really leave everything on key management and make it out of scope? Because, I mean, people were secure five years back as well, but they had keys in software, which made them insecure. You know, but they were claiming they were secure. And another topic which you have in scope is onboarding of supply chain. Now, what happens in supply chain which you're putting in scope? That basically a key management thing in supply chain, right? People steal your keys and they, you know, they use some wrong keys or they get your keys. So it's kind of connected to key management. So like you have one thing in scope, but another thing out of scope.
Yeah, I wasn't clear there. So what I intended on key management systems are these massive systems, at least we have these in IBM, that you've got a thousand keys and you've got to manage them and you've got to keep them, you know, update your keys and roll them. The systems that sell themselves that keep track of which keys go where. That's what I had in mind.
But we will still be covering how the keys should be secured and how the key should be stored.
Yeah, and updated.
And how the keys are provisioned in the manufacturing.
Absolutely, yep.
No, sorry. You're thinking more like, you know, centralized data center wide key stores, not, okay, not like management on a specific device. All right, you may want to specify that.
If I had a cursor, I could update it. Oh, here it is, there it is. It disappeared for a long time. No? I don't know how to describe this on a device. Sorry, I hate to type in front of a bunch of people. All right. Comments? What did I say? Okay. All right, well, we're not getting very far, are we? So another thing in attestation, particularly in some of the NIST standards, involves verifying certificates. And you've got to go off somewhere to verify whether this certificate or this key is still valid. But we, we don't want to go on that side of the fence, right? To get into how are those verified? It's hand waving as to how it's done, but we don't want to go into those systems that do it.
So we want to skip the process where the certificates are verified by various sign or entities like that, right?
Right, although this too could be controversial if you have within your, call it your ecosystem, something that does verify those certificates, you know, but I would like to leave this out. Exactly. Yep, yep. And then there's the protocols to talk to it, right? So, yeah. As far as those systems, I think sort of like the key management systems, they have their own requirements. they have their own requirements. Okay. This one hurts, number seven, because I'm a certification bigot and I'm like, you know, FIPS and common criteria, yay yay. But I think even at this point, it's kind of early to be talking about, you know, what's a protection profile for this? And we might add it later, as much as I would like to, but I think we're not ready for that yet. Alright, and number...
It probably would be nice to design something that's FIP certifiable. Like, we don't want to design something that's totally uncertifiable, that everyone implements, so... It's sort of, maybe it's like a long-range goal to keep in mind, but sort of add a scope for the very first pass.
I think there's two pieces to this. One is about certification, but there's also about designing to existing standards. The two pieces of this question, one is getting the process of certification, but also defining to standards. I think our goal, of course, would be to define to standards. And I think none of us are going to create something that won't meet FIPS, right? That would be suicide.
At least not intentionally.
Not intentionally, yes.
Alright.
These are the starting points, which we believe are out of scope. As we go forward and on more, maybe something will get put in there.
Yep. Definitely.
So, we're just parking these IMs?
Yeah.
It's good that you can be out of all of them now.
Yeah. Move a metascope. But as we tackle the in-scope, we'll start to, I think, start to pull some of this stuff back in as we make further progress. Like, the virtualization and so many you talked about. I think it's right to start with the physical and then work our way up. But if we just have a completely broad, undefined scope, we'll circle back on the same conversations and hypotheses and theories and never make progress.
You've been to some of our meetings.
Guffel.
I'm sure you don't have those.
Have enough of those internally, so...
Alright, compliance tests. So, I would actually like to see this in scope, but I didn't know what the rest of the group felt about this.
So, is this more like FIPS compliant?
Well... So, for example, in the, in TCG, you've got some functionality test suite. So, maybe compliance is not the right word, but at least a...
Compliance in terms of talking the language between components? So, you can claim that you can be integrated regardless of your security level? Or is it including security as well?
I don't know. Or maybe interoperability tests is a better thing would be... Alright.
Because you won't be able to have an open standard and let people design systems based on those components if you cannot get interoperability.
Of course, that requires somebody to write them.
It's both of the forms.
So, does that mean, like, whatever solution the group comes up with, that's being tested on, let's say, Alum, for example? And now, it's being tested on another system, which is modified version of Alum, which Quanta has done? So, does that mean that it should work on both of them? Is that what we're talking about, or can I just say something?
I'm not answering. I'm waiting for others.
Yeah, I mean, I think the idea is, like, if you have, you know, an Intel NIC and a Mellanox NIC and a Quantum NIC, they should all communicate their attestation back, like, to whatever is centrally managing this on the system in the same way. So that no matter what you plug in, it, they work together. It's, I think it's more like standardizing communication protocols.
So, what we're saying here is that we want to achieve that, but we won't really be testing it on different platforms as a part of the scope, right?
I think that should be up to the OPM, right?
Yeah, I don't, like, the security project isn't going to match, like, regression test racks. I think it's up, I think it should be up to, you know, a device maker to make sure they meet the specification and probably test with a couple different things, like, to make sure they meet it in real life and not just on paper.
That's a good, it does bring up a good question, and I'm not quite sure how that works, whatever. OCP and specifications, is there always conformance testing to some degree? I know there's like, in one of the keynotes, somebody mentioned some OCP labs that were doing validation and verification. So, I'm not that well-informed about it, so I'm not too sure what they do in that area.
I can tell you that, like, just to be accurate, Mellanox or Broadcom, or some other device, sticking into the server chassis, there's going to be issues. And we're going to have to work with them over some time to line them up. Nothing just plugs in and, so somebody has to do the testing, even after whatever PCI and other specifications.
It would work on the platform with Broadcom, yes, it would work on other platforms.
Exactly, exactly. There's, inevitably, there's some small tweaks to firmware or drivers or something that it don't have.
In fact, yesterday, in the market survey, whatever, sessions, some of the feedback that came back from the community is that it's good to have these OCP standards, but there have been, there's been a lot of pain in trying to get things incorporated. I guess customers thought that they would be more plug-in, plug-and-play, just work, and it hasn't turned out to be that way, so...
They should take a look at Titan and Cerberus, right, Nate?
Alright, do we want to kick anything else out of scope? Or, I guess you can just, go ahead.
So, the yes on tests, are you going to move this down to in-scope or something?
Yeah, I'll move it down.
Okay.
So, from the, I guess, silicon vendor, CPU vendor perspective, I guess, the way personally, the way I'm looking at it is, well, this is all good and nice. You guys are going to test your platform, but I'm still not going to trust the platform. And I'm going to do, go through my secure boot flows. And there's certain, I'm going to still authenticate the SPI flash to what, ensure what's on the SPI flash is trusted. Trusted firmware using whatever mechanisms we have for, you know, our firmware components for the CPU. And I guess, what I'm wondering is, how much, now that, that's all good, but the question is, do we expect cooperated, how much cooperation do we expect between the CPU, secure boot attestation flows versus the platform, secure boot attestation flows? Is that an in-scope thing, or is that also? I mean, we're standardizing the communication, understand that. But I guess, the concern I always have, you know, being from Qualcomm, is we designed these things to be too Intel-specific. So, you know, I guess that's why I'm asking this question, is how much of the CPU secure boot flows, which is baked into the silicon, which, you know, is out of scope here? Or are you guys expecting a lot of cooperative authentication? Or I don't know, are we passing back and forth attestation reports between the CPU and the platform? Or what are we doing there? Is my question clear? I think we've had...
But I think you answered earlier. You're now in a device, like, I... You're the one, me, the central attestation. Your SSD is no longer the main CPU, it's another device.
But, but, but...
But his point is valid, right? For the standpoint of the TPM, there's really no interaction between Cerberus right now.
I think it also...
Well, there is, yeah.
Another question, or something to consider, which is, you know, CPUs have embedded keys in them? And if you ask something that's interposing between the SPI and CPU, it needs to have the same keys to verify the same firmware? For instance, you know, Intel's BIOS ACM? Like, how's that going to start up? Is Cerberus going to verify the signature of that before the CPU verifies the signature of that?
And one point that's, like, for example, internally, we always drive to, we have, like, our own, like, principles that we want to drive. And one of those is that essentially, every component that consumes firmware from somewhere else should authenticate its firmware on its own, not just blindly trust. Like, I know that there's a platform on the component that, like, may do, like, recovery and some first-level authentication. But I'm not just going to blindly consume whatever it gives me. I will take my keys that I store somewhere. I will authenticate those keys, or I will use those keys to authenticate the firmware, and I may attest to that piece, hey, I've, my authentication on this path, this is the hash that I, for example, the measurement of the firmware that I authenticated with my keys, these are the hash of my keys, for example, of my public key, whatever, right? But, but, I think we're like, from our point of view, we're going to be like Adam and, like, we're not going to blindly trust.
I think also that, I would feel more comfortable if the CPU continues to do some kind of firmware verification with more boots, because it's a much harder device to clone. And D layer and things like that, whereas, you know, some kind of orchestration ship. I could probably see somebody just manufacturing their own, with their own key, or to do it and assign whatever from where they want to.
And on the other hand, though, for example, with CPUs and in data centers, pretty much everyone's using socket chips, right? So, now, if you have some keys on the sockets, those keys travel with the socket, right? So, you expose yourself to a supply chain where someone could put a different socket with different keys. So, there is needs for some cross-authification, I think, in future.
So, in my mind, I think that anywhere we do this sort of, you know, interposer chip firmware verification, I would still like there to be CPU root of trust.
It's only another, it's not instead.
Yeah, another layer, yeah.
Exactly.
For allowing you to test at the system level, rather than to do the home testing that you are doing as part of your boot process.
I think, Nate, you made this comment earlier in one of the calls, and I wanted to, like, mention it, but then I forgot. You mentioned a number of, like, millions of dollars for D layer of CPU. The number I got back from somebody was $500 to take private key out of the TPM.
Out of a TPM, or?
You know, how complex is, you know, Cerberus? $1,000 for D layer?
You can take the key out of it. It's not going to be much good to you, it's right? So, it's a full key. So, with, I can't really speak to Titan, but with Cerberus, it does not prevent the intrinsic functionality that may or may not be in the CPU from functioning. So, that assumption is a myth. It can also use different keys. Is, you know, the actual key and the signature is different to the digest. The digest would, of the firmware, is going to be the digest of the firmware. But the keys that have signed that, it could be one in OTP memory of the CPU. It could be one in the OTP memory of Cerberus or Titan or anywhere. So, the multi-authension or verification, maybe there's some duplication there. Maybe there's some defense in depth, because, you know, put it this way. You know, there's a lot of silicon, you know, manufacturers here, but the only reason that I went, my team had to go through the trouble of dealing with Cerberus, you know, because, is because you didn't do your job right in the first place, right? So, that's the reality of it. The state of the industry is not where we want it to be. And we're here to get it to where we think it should be. And I hope collectively, that's what we're thinking. And if Cerberus and Titan are this interim way to get there, I'd be very happy with that. Because the end goal, right, is a means to an end.
I don't think, you know, if we're advocating that it should be either or, or that it's not useful, it's just understanding how much and where you depend on it versus not. I, you know, certainly if I have a CPU that doesn't have a root of trust, right? I would entirely depend on Cerberus.
Yes.
But if we do have a root of trust, I would like both of them to be there. Like you said, defense in depth is always better. And so, just make sure that they interoperate well, and so we can have both.
And plus, we need, like, we realize that, like, we need a platform root of trust for recovering, for different type of things, right?
Yes.
For protecting that, making sure that, for example, if someone gets a privileged escalation on our CPU, they cannot destroy the platform, right? And that has to be done by the platform.
So, put another way, what I would say is, just because Cerberus is there, doesn't mean you guys are off the book.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, also, if we write a good enough standard here, they can use the same standard in their silicon.
Yeah.
Ideally, if we develop everything in the open, we can use it, Qualcomm can use it, HP can use it, right?
They all have the same book.
Exactly, yeah.
Ahmed has a question. I think, Ahmed, if you speak into your microphone, we can hear you. Let's try.
You got to speak into this microphone, we can hear you.
Ahmed, are you there? I think if you speak into your computer microphone, we will be able to hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear myself. So, I wanted to go back to the point about the CPU having a centralized point of authentications and the security of the platform. So, we're talking about the cloud environment. It's a multi-tenant environment, and we've seen many vulnerabilities in the last few years in CPUs. And side channels still an issue. So, actually, from a security point of view, in a cloud environment, it would make more sense to have security on the NIC side more than the CPU. I can't hear.
I guess it goes back to, like, you know, you know, you have potentially different security domains, and what you're trying to protect in the different domains, right? You know, you want to apply the principle of least privilege, make sure, you know, the BMC only has access what it should have access to, and so on and so forth, right? And so, you're going to be, you're going to have kind of an orthogonal... You have different root of trusts that are authenticating different things, and they could do so independently, and maybe cooperatively to some extent. Maybe there's an argument to exchange attestation report. Like, for example, the argument that, yeah, socket can be removed and put on another platform should the CPU, you know, pass on some information to platform to indicate, this is a hash of my OTP. So, you know, is this the right socket? There may be definitely use cases for exchange of information. But I guess, the term centralized assumes that you have this central root of trust, and everything in the chain of trust kind of begins from there, and you move forward. Whereas, there's different things that are powered on in parallel, or they're just the authenticating or attesting independent things. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, but we agree, and I've heard this earlier. If, even if your system is attacked, you still want to be able to access your server. You still want access to the network. What are you going to do when your system is compromised? Your CPU, especially in a multi-tenant environment, where people can run their own code?
Is the question, my question is, are you advocating that the NIC be sort of the platform root of trust?
Not necessarily, but I would say that the NIC would have, in a cloud environment, it would make sense that the network would have more active role in here. And not everything that would start, it could be a distribution of, you know, that the network would start something, then there's sort of delocation to the CPU or to the BMC or something else. What I'm saying is, the architecture should be different for how we do it for a cloud environment.
I would actually say that the architecture doesn't matter that much, and... you can have any component be the, the orchestrator for root of trust. What, what, what the real concern here is whether or not your NIC comes up, and that really goes back to whether you have an A B firmware image, whether you make sure your firmware, you know, you don't want basically a permanent denial of service attack. That's what you want to avoid at all costs in, in, in sort of like a large system environment. Um, so, if you can guarantee, if I can guarantee you that your NIC will always come up, do you care whether it's the one that is, you know, orchestrating the platform root of trust? I don't think you should.
Um, it's less what I, what I care, it's about what is right, and where is the point that is least, uh, where, where least likely an attack would happen?
Um, I, NIC is a very good place to attack. If I take down your NIC, I take down your system completely, it's bricked, right? Sony Pictures will look like a walk in the park.
Do, do we have to solve that with here, though? I mean, where the attesty exists, or how it orchestrated, I, I assume that's kind of out of scope here, we're think, I assume we're defining the protocols, how to talk to it, what information we need to provide to it, um, 'cause I would think every platform's gonna have a different opinion, depending what the platform does first, but some want BMC, some want a third party, some want the NIC, some want, you know, whatever, but does, I don't think it should matter for what we're doing here.
Yeah, I would, I would agree, and I think we could move on, because, uh, I, I'll cover that in just a minute, and what's in scope, I hope. Uh, and in fact, I could just do this one, because we're talking about that, number three, uh, for protocols. Um, as far as establishing trust in the attester, um, and even deciding who to admit, for example, into your ecosystem, there are different kinds of way, different ways of doing it. One is dynamically, but, you know, you've never, you have no idea what adapter's going to be joining your system, or what, what component will be joining your system. I don't know what to expect. Um, there's the predefined approach where, um, I know that I have the system, and I only play with my friends X, Y, and Z, and I don't let anybody else play in my sandbox. Um, there's even, uh, what I call a trust gradient, which is, there may be multiple parties, but because I know more about this adapter, or because it's been, I keep saying adapter, this component, because it's been certified, or for whatever reason, it's a business partner, I trust that one more than I trust others, so. Another question is, is there anything that can help us to quantify the trust? Um, in a, another project I've worked on in smart cards, we use the common criteria evaluation level to decide how much we trusted something, but that doesn't mean that's the answer, it's just, is there some quantifiable thing that we can use to assess what, how much we trust something? Um, and then, I think this is what Ahmed was getting to, which is, um, how are we authenticating these subsystems? Is it, you know, is it a hierarchical approach? Is it, we all, one, we're one big family, and it's all mutual authentication? Are we gonna anoint someone to be the master, and then, how are we gonna do that? So I think all of that is in scope, and we'll have to address that. So, um, all right, and this detection was in the original draft, so I'm not quite sure what that meant. Does anybody remember who wrote that? We may have to come back to that. All right, so let me go back to what's in scope. Okay, so, um, one is ownership, um, obviously, ownership and configuration. Uh, how do we get the, um, the, the systems, how do we onboard them? Are they done, are they initialized at the supply chain? How do we protect them within the supply chain? Um, are they provisioned at manufacturing time, or only at deployment? I know in our systems, for example, we have, um, what we call F R U S, or Field Replaceable Units, and we don't know where the F R U S are going to be going into what system, so, you know, the initialization part at manufacturing time is limited to what we can do without knowing where the things are destined to go. So, but all of that is in scope.
So, one thing that I just wanted to mention here. Before, mostly, so I don't forget, and it goes on record, is that one of the things that's really useful, for, especially for change of ownership and things like that, is if the hardware itself hashes the key that it's going to use, you know, because some hardware can have multiple keys, and some can be retired and fused out and things like that, I want to know which key was actually used to verify the signature, and that should be hashed into something like a P C R, so that it's provable later on to me. So, if I got somebody else's retired hardware somehow, or somebody forced me to roll over my keys, or on some machine, we made a mistake and it didn't get fused out, you should know.
Okay, first that.
S- sorry?
The main, that.
I think if it's done in a, let's say, a hardware block, that initially, you know, checks the key, that's gonna be usable, and puts it somewhere, yeah.
It's not a key.
Or it's in something that's, you know, a ROM that's on the S O C, you could trust it.
Asher, there's also a problem, where you know that it's not a replay response that you're expecting.
Yeah.
That, that's the main issue.
I, so, I think, what, you basically need some kind of challenge response protocol for that, right? So you need.
So you need to expose the secret, which you definitely want to expose.
No, you don't need to expose the secret, you need to expose, like, let's say, a generation counter, that, for a key, or you need to say that this is the hash of the key. So you're not really exposing the secret, you're exposing what, so, if you have a public key, I need, I want to know which public key was used, because you could have multiple public keys, you could have a CPU that's somebody else's CPU that you put into my data center. I really have no way of knowing.
You just need to hash out of.
Yeah.
The hash of the public.
The debate that we had internally, and, and where we come from, is, we basically labeled it as, how do you do hardware root of trust verification? That's the bucket we created. And then we created techniques that we can, you don't want to do on every device, but if someone really said, hey, if that device proved to me your hardware root of trust can be trusted, we have a mechanism to do that, right? But I think that's still out of scope here, of here. But that's about establishing trust comment I made earlier, this, this gets, gets to be really nasty, and our conclusion is, we'll bring it down to the hardware root of trust, we can verify that, but then, of course, someone will ask, well, how do you verify your verifying of that, right? And you gotta stop someplace.
So, if we already have existing T P Ms and, and stuff to do that, to do measured boot and attestation, are we inventing something new here? And we wouldn't be using one of those protocols to do some of this attestation between components, or, or what are we doing?
Another device can talk to a T P M.
And, and this is something that we need to remember.
Can we leverage the mechanisms, the defined methods? I mean, if we.
The method should be definitely defined, yeah. The method should be defined, and we need to, uh, to clearly state, for example, where we stop the, the questions, like what you said before.
Because I know T C G's already kind of tried to handle some of these issues, right? How do you securely attest it? And so, I don't think it's something we necessarily want to reinvent.
Yeah, there's no, there's nothing wrong, I, I think we should look at those for looking at methods, but not implementation. But even T C G has, even T P M uses, so asking questions, you know, how do you, how do you know that happened, right? And you don't.
Yeah.
Well, I think, so.
I think, to the extent possible, we should leverage things from T C G, i- you know, they've done a lot of thinking about, on the T P M side, in terms of the challenge response protocol, instead of, in terms of nonce freshness, you know, boot counters and things like that, whether the, P C R hash extension, but, you know, whether that turns into, like, you use a discrete T P M, or you use similar functionality in your device, is kind of, uh, you know, an open question, but I think that there's a lot of good properties, and they've thought through the security issues, so we should leverage that. It also might help in terms of software tooling, if the interfaces look more or less the same. I mean, if, or if we.
Libraries for T P M will start working, that's.
Right, or if we come up with a different, let's say, we come up with, like, you know, not P C Rs, but P C R plus plus or whatever, and we just said that all devices that are compliant with O C P use this new spec, so that if you build, you have to, if you have to rebuild tooling, you only have to do it once. I think that would also be useful. Um, yeah, so one other question, I think, that sort of is related to what you mentioned, is whether this, you know, where, where do you want it to be a discrete T P M versus T P M-like functionality in the chip? And discrete T P M has its problems, the interface is, you know, in plain text, so, uh, in the clear, so, you know, having something that's in the CPU itself, or whatever, in the root of trust, might be more secure. Um, that said, I did hear about E M D's firmware T P M having some issues with it, so, uh, there are no guarantees, but.
Also, um, I wanted to comment on the, on Chris's point about the protocols. Um, I work in IBM's research division, and another group within ours is the, are the cryptographers, and I can assure you that if we invent a new protocol, we will be ripped apart. They do not like new protocols. Use this one, maybe tweak it a bit, but, you know, it's bad news to start inventing your own.
There's a lot of protocols already been done and invented for cryptographys.
Yes.
But I think that it might be interesting in the future to, um, establish a, some form of, uh, an authenticated communication between root of trust, whether it's gonna be platform root of trust and the CPU root of trust, or platform root of trust and devices, we will need some form of authenticated and maybe encrypted communication, right? So that we can exchange information.
That's a great one.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, and that may be a, a huge contribution from here. Okay, shall we move on?
But does that, does that fall into protocols? Like, that, that, e- establishing that, that secure channel between a CPU and a root of trust, or between different entities, does that fall into protocols? Because in my mind, it's very different to cryptographic protocols, and then some, you know, channel protocol, essentially. So I think, cha- channel protocol in scope, cryptographic protocols out of scope.
Or, or at least that we use whatever is.
We use something that exists.
Don't, don't come up with something you want, yeah. And at the same time, like, a lot of those have to be fairly lightweight, and don't take seconds to establish a channel, right? Because then, like, we, we all have a, I don't know, uh. We want, we all want to boot within a certain amount of time, right? We don't spend ten minutes just to get everything talking together, right?
Yep.
But you brought up a big caveat. So our initial work internally about boot times.
Yeah, he needs.
Our initial work on boot times is that we cannot meet classic boot time requirements that we meet today when we start overlaying S test station on them. Something has to give someplace, and I don't know how we're gonna, it's out of scope for us, but for the platform teams, they're gonna have to figure something out, 'cause if they expect us to meet the boot times we have today, we can't do it.
So, that's a question for scope. Do we wanna include performance, then?
But something, we need to, to cut a, a clear border here. We have the power up, and we have reboot, and they are not necessarily the same. If you can trust your platform and assume that nothing really took place in terms of modifying your firmware and so on, then you can, let's say, extend the power up sequence without affecting reboot time, and this is not less important.
Ask more, I don't know how to do that.
Well, that's, one of the other problems that comes along with this, is, there's also requirements to do firmware updates without reset, and, I mean, when we discuss this internally, it's, you know, push, you're going in opposite directions with those two different things, right? So, how to handle that and.
Remain secure.
Remain secure at the same time as providing the functionality that is needed for, for doing this kind of thing.
Would I, would I, as an end consumer, be more comfortable if the whole device really did reset, than if you tried to do some fancy, like, bootstrapping of the firmware on the fly, and in the process that the old firmware lying around somewhere in memory? Our, our conclusion, we have to, we have to reset, because.
It depends on the S test station methodology you're gonna use, but if you have secrets that only the hardware root of trust can see, right? Our conclusion is you have to reset on, if you want a test station to work on every flash and all that good stuff, we're resetting, just that simple.
Okay, so, um, I don't know, it was a question to me, but I got hang of my.
Yeah, people are asking to reboot without firmware reset.
Um, reboot without, without.
Without reset.
Reset, resetting firmware. Um, I think reboot time is, is really, really important, it's an important aspect. Um, I know in, in the cloud, it's an important aspect in, in having, uh, systems to, to come up fast, so, um, it, it brings up a good question, and to me, it becomes usable security, if the security implementation is usable or not, meaning what other aspects does it impact? You know, if you wanna make a device highly secure, again, I'll butcher a quote from, from Amazon's security guy, he was like, just pull the power cord. If you want your device to be secure, pull the power cord. But that's not usable security, right? So, the security has to be usable, so there's all these things we have to be cognizant of is, and I think increasing, uh, reboot time is, is one of those trade-offs that we have to be, uh, very, very cognizant of as we, we design this.
I wonder if, uh, no. One option is to essentially sacrifice some cold boot time, but then optimize for warm reboots, right? Uh, 'cause that's, that's, I think, what cloud is mostly worried about, you want to do warm reboot very, very quickly, right? But you can probably live with a slightly extended cold boot time.
We, we wanna never reboot.
Yeah. But, but, but if you reboot, you want to come up really quickly, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I chime in on this? Because I hear this a lot from our systems guys, we're like, oh, reboot time, reboot time, and when I go and talk to them, like, how, when was the last time the system rebooted? How many times a year do you reboot the system, right? And we spend a lot of effort trying to, like, make reboots faster, and be like, why do you need to check all this D RAM, and, you know, all this kind of stuff, and it turns out that reboots hardly ever happen. And they don't want, the reliability, people don't want you to reboot your hardware, because the maximum number of hardware failures happen when you hard reset the system. So, I would just say, you know, if we want to worry about power on time, let's make sure we have data to back it up.
I guess I have a counter example, which is, you know, systems that run all the A T M machines in a country, and it's like, yeah, if you gotta reboot, you better do it fast.
Depends on where the machine is.
One, one thing I was gonna mention, too, is, on the other side, we got switches, P C I switches that have firmware on them that's updatable, and it can reboot as part of an error recovery. So, it's not like the whole platform, we got individual devices that have to go through P C I spec reboot times, or they, they're not gonna recover in time, so you have to worry about that end.
Yeah, and then, do you have to re-test those devices?
Definitely.
Well, I think that's part of the conversation here, so even internally, we had the debates, do you have a mechanism, fast reboot, come up fast, you don't go through a test station process? The goal is, you assume you're trusted for some reason, you just wanna do a quick reset, and then the back, the cold reboot, the cold reboot, that's when you, you force through S test station, and now the discussion really becomes, how do you enable, you know, how do you say, this time I wanna do S test station, this time I don't? But I, I think that's the conclusion we're still like coming to, 'cause otherwise, we're not gonna change the whole ecosystem to, to accommodate our longer delays every single time, right?
All right, shall we keep going? Oh, one more.
So I don't remember if you, do you have platform reset attacks in scope? Because that's the thing that makes me nervous, whenever I hear about a feature request for updating firmware without rebooting the system, or, or, or just warm reset, hey, we wanna, you, you know, faster reboot, uh, you know, every time you do a, you know, security risk assessment on these things, and, you know, T C G's been looking at platform reset attacks quite a bit in the past few years, and they have a spec on it. A lot of, those, those features end up being pretty, you know, easy security holes to exploit, and it makes me pretty nervous when, when we just agree for the, and it, you know, similar to debug features, uh, which we haven't talked about yet, which I assume we're gonna talk to. But, but yeah, so, so the platform reset tax is something we should probably think about, and, and what it, I, I, my opinion is, it seems like something we should talk about, if, if we are gonna have a concept of. If, if we are going to have a concept of warm reboot, what types of things do we want to mitigate against in a warm reboot? What's, what should be permitted and what shouldn't be permitted?
That goes in our threat model.
Yes. Yes, it's not my, the threat model isn't mine. I think Joe's, yeah.
You taking notes, Joe?
I, we wrote it down, reset attacks.
So what...
I just wrote that, no, we don't have any now, but I wrote down my notes.
So while we're talking about reboots and warm reboots and things like that, I think, you know, one thing that would be good to have is a provable sort of reboot counter. I like to, I use the term provable every time I want to say something that's signed by a TPM that I can attest against. Because it's just, you know, shorthand for provable. But, because I, I may want to know that the system has been reset and I want to attest it again, right? And it may be that it doesn't have ephemeral keys. For some reason, it has long-lived keys and I, if it reboots, I want to attest it. Or if it's gone through some particular portion of it, you know, has decided to try to do like a warm reset. You know, for some people, it's okay, but for me, it's not okay. I'm gonna be like, "I don't care, you do a full reset anyway, and I will attest you again." So having counters that tell you these things and that can be, the values can be retrieved signed, I think that's important.
I, I think we're quickly going to what is going to be included into the testation creation, right? You know, he's talking about resets, so we could talk about internal states of the part and all that kinds of things. But at some point, that will have to be part of the discussion. What is the expectation that would be included in the S-Test Station values?
Debug modes.
Debug modes. And then you get the debate, is that, again, we, we debate internally, is that, is that remembered or forgotten on every reset? You know, it's, those are all the conversations we need to have.
All right, let's get back up here to keys then. All right, so we're talking about what is in scope for keys. So I don't have answers to these questions, it's just, this is what's in scope. So who controls the keys? Where do you put them? And how are they protected?
Only concern I have, you use the term keys?
Yeah.
And to me, it's too vague. In a, in a given part, there are many keys, right? Which key are we talking about?
Yeah, you're right. And it's not just keys, it's other stuff.
No, some of them you don't care about, right? I mean... Yeah, my public keys, I don't care about my public keys.
Well, even public keys you have to protect because if a bad guy...
So they can't be changed, but not worry about loss. Maybe, that brings a question, what does mean to protect, right? That's...
Yeah, that's a good question. So is it, are they secret?
I think there's also sort of keys versus device identifiers.
Yes.
There's also dice. So how are you, which one are you using to identify your device? Are these different than the secure boot keys that was in the secure boot document?
Secure keys might be some of the... The secret keys, you're, sorry. Secure boot keys might be some of the secret keys you're trying to protect.
I'm just trying to, should that be handled in the secure boot document? The secure boot keys and not in the attestation document? What are these specific keys?
I, I think it's reasonable to debate, though, during attestation, do you include the state of your, your, your secure boot keys? I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of centrical trust, but it's not, it's, it's an interesting question, at least we can talk about it.
I think the attestation should include the security descriptors of the device. Not just the firmware, but anything that's changeable, including LTP and so on, that we can measure at some point.
Yeah, our, our view is anything that can, can affect the cryptographic state of the part. You know, all the E-fuses and that kind of stuff would be included in S-Test Station.
Yeah, I'm wondering if that goes down here in measurement collection, which is what to report?
Yeah, that, that's the fun conversation, I think.
All right, let's stick it in here. It's, sorry, I always hate typing in front of an audience. Okay, what, especially with one hand? Okay, let's move back on up. All right, so, let's see. So I just added one on the fly. Are these keys or device IDs, are they secret? Some of them, so in some discussions we've had with other vendors and partners is, will a, a device authenticate itself? What will it use to do that? Is it going to sign something? Is it going to have a private key within itself that it's going to use to sign something to attest to the platform? So we need to keep track of where are all those keys? Which ones are just protected, which ones are secret and protected?
I think we should also distinguish between the firmware signing keys and attestation keys. Because they get conflated many times and... Yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe we want to also talk about key signing keys. So that there's, you know, more flexibility for revocation or more protection for keys that are being more frequently used.
Sorry, I lost the G. Yeah, then we get into OCSP again, right? All right, let's see. Then, of course, how, this is definitely in scope. How are these things updated, if at all? How frequently are they updated? This is one that we, we deal with internally a lot, which is, when do these things expire? When do they have to roll?
Are these platform or device, per device? Are we gonna try to answer these questions on a per-device basis or...
I think we'll have to, yeah, I think we'll have to. I don't think we can do it on a global...
The most obvious CPUs will have a set of answers versus, versus, sorry.
Yeah, obviously CPUs would have probably a set of answers for these questions. And, you know, PCI devices may, may be different. And even within PCI devices, there may be more variance in, in what the answer is. So are you, I guess the question is, for a particular type, are you expecting the same answer across the board for a compliant device or, okay?
I don't know about everybody else, but I'm not. But again, we're, we're trying to figure out what's in scope, what's out of scope. So we don't have the answers yet, just...
So talking about keys, will there be a way of, let's say if some key is stolen and we know it has been compromised? So how do we pass that information into a central tool chain or whatever that, you know? If you see such key being attested, then it has to be kicked out because it has been compromised.
Oh, I didn't put revocation in here, did I?
I think the question is, what is the, like, better words? How do a mechanism communicate expected S-Test Station values or bad value? The whitelist, your blacklist, right? Any kind of, any kind of certificates that need to be...
Yeah, I mean, if someone is putting a rogue NIC card, and I know this is rogue because the key that is being used to validate this NIC card has already been compromised at supply chain. So how does my host know that, you know, "No, I cannot validate this because it's a compromised key"?
Okay, anything else on keys? We have 15 minutes till lunch, so... All right, we already talked about protocols. Yep, uh-oh, yep.
One thing I want to interject here is thinking about man-in-the-middle attacks. Where you could basically say that you think you're testing this device, but that device isn't even on your computer. I reach out over the network, talk to another system, attest it, and then give you back all of the values that you expect. It's not an easy problem, but I think that, you know, just putting a footnote there, being like, "Let's talk about what we want to do about man-in-the-middle attacks," would be useful.
So, Joe, you're gonna do that one?
I don't know if that falls in scope. I mean, it's a part we talked about, but that almost...
It's a, it's a threat model, right?
Well, it's a protocol problem, right?
The protocol problem, yeah, that's a kind of a distinct area.
So the way, the way to solve this is to have mutual authentication, right? The device needs to authenticate, the platform, the platform needs to authenticate the device. But for that, your protocol needs to support it, and you need to know each other's identifiers and things like that.
That would need some provisioning. Do you establish it? Okay, I'm actually going, then you guys check out my stuff.
Otherwise, it's really easy to just go to another platform that's compatible, collect all the measures from there, come back and just be like...
But then you need to, to work with the fine maintenance operations, like if you're changing a...
I said it wasn't easy.
A full device or a field.
But my point, interesting about the conversation as a whole, though, is, you know, we created the... We created the tax based on attacks in the platform. We really didn't create the attacks, assuming stuff outside the platform. And I don't know if we want to go there or not, because, and then we're really gonna start going into other fields totally at that point.
Do you concentrate now to be inside the box?
Yes, I think so.
Although, no. Although if we do add some protocols for, for authenticated communication between the root of trusts, we're kind of gonna throw that man-in-the-middle attacks along the way, essentially, right?
If you, if you peer-to-peer, it's a hierarchical, or there's some support for peer-to-peer, then you kind of automatically will be in some support.
Yeah, yeah. We could come back and just say... It, it, we could come back to some point and just say, "Hey, for protocol, here are the, the attacks we're trying to mitigate, which is separate from the other platform specific, you know, things we're trying to mitigate."
Just remember that PCI is not involved only inside the box.
That, it's a fair statement, yes.
I also want to say that this, you know, TCG, the TPM thing, this was some of the things that they said. We're like, "We're only trying to protect the chip, we're not trying to protect anything outside of it." And it turned out, it's really easy to now snoop all the traffic, you know, push whatever measurements you want to the TPM and effectively render it useless, so... You, you're right, it's kind of a pain to think about it, but at some point, if you don't think about it, then it's just, you know, that's the attack vector everybody goes for.
So another thing is, you know, like, we, we come up with a solution or architecture, and then we all believe that it's secure. But what data do we provide the end user? Like, let's say Baidu is placing an order for OCP-certified systems. And we say, "Yeah, it's secure," because 20 people in the room believe it's secure. So, so what data do we provide the end user, which helps him to believe that it is secure? I mean, do we, do we plan to run our architecture through a third party and which does some type of replay attacks? And basically do all the threat models that Joe is, is covering in his document? And then we say that, "Yeah, you know, we all believe it's secure because we have run this through a third party. And we did replay attacks for like X number of days and no one could break it."
So you're saying vulnerability analysis?
Yeah, you can call it vulnerability analysis. Are some, some sort of data to back up our...
Back to your, I think, your certification, validation.
This, here.
Yeah.
It might also be something, I don't know how, whether we can do it in a forum of OCP, where companies to get together and fund sort of ongoing evolution. Because there will be, the people will discover bugs and security flaws in the protocol and things like that. Whether we wait for those to be discovered and reported or fund red teams and things, you want to find it and actively fix it.
I mean, how, how does Facebook believe that whatever they are buying from their partners, which is OCP-certified, is really secure? I mean, everything is secure till it is broken.
Well, one question we might ask ourselves is, how long do we expect this to take? You know, because, you know, one of the, what was it, yesterday they were boasting about when group finished in four months? And, yeah, and this doesn't, I mean, already what we have here is quite a long time.
A project, an OCP project, they finished in four months?
Yeah.
We need to get some of those people to join. As weekend warriors.
I don't think it was an OCP project. They were talking about IEEE and networking, that if you get it approved through IEEE, it takes like two years because of voting rights. And if you do it the other way, there is, there are ways to get it done.
Really fast.
You could do this right now, but we...
No, the point was, they're very quick, very nimble. It does make the question of how to get through this quicker, because there is urgency, we all know that. You know, making CPU takes some time, I guess.
I mean, it doesn't mean that we have to like do it, but that's something we should talk about.
So maybe we, we get through the list here?
Yeah.
Prioritize?
All right, so you want me to put vulnerability analysis on here? And then we'll prioritize it. Oh, I can put it in Test Suites, it's a good place.
It can be as well a separate effort outside of this project. Because it also sort of the next, the next level, this is like more easier for our vendor actually putting in there how secure is the key that they're signing your firmware with in all that.
I mean, personally, I would vote against it. As much as I'm a believer in vulnerability analysis, I'll be the first one to, to advocate for it. I'm just worried about the time it will take and who will do it. Because quite often, at least in our experience, we've had to pay outsiders who are not involved in it and not passionate about our particular design. We've got to send it out and cost money, yeah.
I've been through one of such exercises where, you know, external people came in and they were there in the lab for like two weeks. And they did everything possible in terms of attacks, in terms of key hacking, snooping the data. But that exercise of two weeks really gave the client a confidence that, you know, what we believe is secure is really secure. And then we can back up with the data when it goes to an end customer.
I mean, one thing that might lend some reassurance to people is if they're like, "Oh, the, you know, these cloud customers and these huge NIC providers and these huge CPU providers all like did something together, that might help people think it's more secure as well." I mean, I know like internally at Google, we have a security team whose job is to like, you know, throw a server on the ground and kick it until it breaks. And so we'll, like, we'll be beating on anything that we design and, and making sure it's secure. But yeah, I mean, I do agree, it's kind of hard to communicate that externally because we're not going to be like, "Oh, here's the list of all the things we did to this to make sure it passed." Make sure you do something else to break it.
It's kind of like, it's kind of like asking, "How do you know that a TPM is secure?" TCG just produces a specification and then you get a TPM. How do you know that that TPM is secure? It produces a specification, you've got a NIC. You kind of look at the specification and you're like, "This looks good." And hopefully, these guys did what was expected.
Then you get a common criteria evaluation, right? Yeah.
So I, I think even to get to that point where we're, we're concerned about how we have conformance and ensure that people have implemented stuff correctly, I think that's a massive leap forward to where we're at even today, where a lot of, a lot of equipment has nothing. So getting to the point where we can say, "Hey, this is some, you know, guidance on how you go and implement it." And then the attestability and, and conformance, I think that will be a natural evolution. So I like Joe's point of, you know, when we, when we hash this out, and it's right to call it out here. But when we hash it out and we get to the, to the point where we have this list of what's in scope, it's them prioritizing it. And then getting the information out there for others who, who are, you know, either in the process of building silicon or have some device and they've got some questions around how, how to do security. I, I think that, you know, they, they, you know, the, the end goal, at least one of, one of the goals for me here is that they're, they're not coming to me or coming to Microsoft and saying, "How should we implement security?" Instead, there's somewhere they can go. And that would save me maybe 10, 15 meetings a week. So that's what we want.
All right, see if we can get through this list. So one of the things, yes?
The back of this left.
We're not gonna, so we're gonna go
That's the next step, so.
Oh, yeah, you're right. So, because we'll never get through the list.
Get prioritization.
We can't today. Yeah.
But, you know, a lot of this stuff is kind of manual walkthrough, and it's a lot to ask of folks.
A lot of this stuff can be done kind of offline as well, in a walkthrough. It's great having these discussions. But even to have read the specification beforehand is really helpful, so that we come in with ideas, and we can try to stay focused on what's in the document, to help us make progress faster. So I think one of the, you know, I think the enthusiasm in this project is great. And one of my, my personal frustrations is the pace at which we're moving at, but I'm always that way about everything. So it's not unique to this forum. But, yeah, I think for next steps, if we can actually, maybe we're, you know, if we leave it till next Tuesday, we're going to end up starting where we just left off today, and going through the same process as today, and taking another hour, two hours. I think if we can do this offline, and then we can come back and maybe have some idea of prioritization already in your head, and we can discuss the prioritization next week. And if we have a question about scope, we can address it next week, too. So it's not a walkthrough of the document. That's kind of a prerequisite for turning up on Tuesday.
I don't think the link to this document is on the Wiki.
It is, right?
It is? Okay.
Oh, sorry, not the Wiki. It's Send that to Master Doc. Everything is linked to off the Master.
Yeah, so there's a Master Doc that has links to all of the
Ah, okay.
Documents, and I need to make sure that the link to that's on Wiki.
Okay, cool. Yeah, thank you.
Just to echo what Sahil said earlier, though, is, it might also help to accelerate things if you, if we did put together some sort of a straw man, right? Just some, maybe a smaller working group or something like that. You have sub-teams that go off and go do a straw man, go do the threat ma, you know, the threat model, and then obviously, everybody does it chiming on this document, but just a suggestion.
I'm happy to do that, but anybody that wants to sit down and do that. Yeah, to a day or something, just want to
Yeah, I'm willing to just
Anybody else that wants to So the proposal was, was to meet for a day and maybe go through that straw man, and hash out some, from that, we should be able to get our priorities and the steps we're going to go implement.
Maybe we can do some of the session virtually, because, you know
Nice.
For such a thought. If we can have it, you know, online, I can join regardless of the time difference. I'd be more than happy to join.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, let's, let's maybe look at that.
He's just, I'll jump in by, you know, just a bit.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. We can do something, we can host something, and then we can make it online as well. Okay? All right, cool. Thanks a lot, everybody. Let's go get some lunch.
Yeah.